This meeting is called to order. I want to welcome you all to the Town of Smithfield Planning Commission Meeting, Tuesday, February 14, 2023. Would you all stand, please, and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to your God for which it stands, one nation, united, without borders, with liberty and justice for all.
Members of the Planning Commission, this is the organizational meeting of the Smithfield Planning Commission. The first order of business is election of new members. Just so we can understand things, there's been quite a lot of machinations over the last couple of months having to do with the composition of the Planning Commission. As you may or may not know, the Planning Commission is required to have at least one member who is also a member of the Board of Historic and Architectural Review. And the town council, when making new appointments to the Planning Commission to fill vacancies, overlooked that requirement. And so the fix, which is not a bad fix, is that we have one new member, an extra member. There have been four members appointed to serve, and so now we have a quorum of eight members. And you're all entitled to vote in these elections. And so, with that being said, I will open the floor for nominations for Chairman of the Planning Commission.
I'd like to nominate Charles Bryant. He did a fantastic job last year, and I think he deserves another chance.
Second.
Okay. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? That being said, the nominations are closed. All those in favor of electing Charles Bryant as Chairman of the Planning Commission, say aye.
Aye.
Or opposed? The next order of business, the election of the Vice Chairman. The floor is open for nominations.
I'd like to nominate Ms. Hillgas to remain as Vice Chairman.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Hillgas has been nominated and seconded. Any other nominations?
Dr. Pope keeps trumping me. Never mind.
Hearing down, the floor is closed for nominations. All those in favor of electing Julie Hillgas as Vice Chairman, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. Hillgas is elected as the Vice Chairman. Mr. Chairman, the meeting is yours again.
Thank you, Attorney Riddick. And just to thank everyone for your continued support and trust in me as your chairman. Appreciate that. Appreciate that. I'd like to welcome the new members. Well, we have one new member, Mr. Yoko. Welcome to the Commission. Mr. Davidson, he's served before. Welcome back.
Thank you.
And Julie.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome back to you. Okay. Okay, with that being said, the second thing about agenda tonight is Community Development and Planning Directors' Report. Director Clary, please.
Yes, thank you, sir. This is just a reminder that we are live streaming our meeting tonight, and so please make sure you speak into your microphone. Additionally, on Tuesday, February 7, Town Council did award the contract for the entrance corridor guidelines and the historic district guidelines update to Paleo West. We're looking forward to getting this process started, and please feel free to email me with any ideas or suggestions for improvements on these guidelines. I will share them with the consultants. We will be beginning to start scheduling working sessions with them as well. Thank you.
Ms. Clary, where's this consultant from? Are they local?
They have office, they have gone remote, and so they have offices all over the United States.
Okay. Thank you.
Attorney Clary, thank you. The second thing about agenda tonight, and I do want to thank you for reminding everyone, we are live streaming. I was at the town council meeting, last town council meeting, and, well, I was hoping that's where live stream has stayed. I thought that was something that the town citizens wanted more so than Planning Commission, but I wanted this, it's open discussion, transparency for everyone. So again, as Attorney Clary reminded us, speak clearly into the mic so those at home can hear us, can hear us as well. Third item on our agenda tonight is upcoming meetings and activities. Tuesday, February 1, the Board of Historic and Architectural Review Meeting is held here, the 21st at 7:30 PM. I believe the Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting has been canceled. And February 27, you have Town Council Committee Meetings, and on March 7, next month, you have the Town Council Meeting, 6:30 PM here at Smithfield Center. Next item is public comments. The public is invited to speak to the Planning Commission on any matters except scheduled public hearings, which we have three of today later on. Please use the sign up sheet. I see no one signed up. Comments are limited to five minutes per person. Any required response from the town will be provided in writing following the meeting. Even though you didn't sign up, would anyone like to speak at this time? You may, if there's an opportunity to speak about anything. Seeing none? Public comments is closed. Planning Commission comments.
Mr. Chair, so during our last meeting, I was asked to address the town about the right of way. So they had already spoken to the executor of the trust, saying that they've already made some meetings, they've already met with him. And as far as the standard of the buildings, you know, I brought it to their attention, and that was, they took it for consideration.
Mr. Gibbs?
That's it.
Mr. Vett?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Yoko? Dr. Pope?
Mr. Swacker?
Vice Chairman? Hillgas? No? No comments?
Mr. Davidson?
No.
Okay.
All right.
All right, then. Moving on. Item number six on our agenda tonight is Planning Commission Bylaws Amendment. Town of Smithfield is the applicant. Staff report, please.
Yes. Thank you, sir. Town Council has requested that the Planning Commission amend their bylaws to create an additional member. This will create eight commissioners in total. A redlined version of this bylaw amendment is included in the pages immediately following this staff report. Town staff do recommend approval as submitted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have just one question. And impressed attorney, where do you can answer this? What will be required a quorum at that point? Is that five?
It would.
Okay.
My question as well. I was curious about that. What, any other comments?
It's my understanding with eight on the Commission now, if it's a tie, that's an automatic fail.
That's correct.
That's correct. A vote that doesn't receive a majority of votes in favor of a motion fails.
Correct.
But that could happen in instances with seven on the Commission. Yes. Because very often people will either abstain, or there are sometimes there are absences. So it's really nothing different.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we amend the bylaws as presented.
We have a motion and a second to amend the bylaws as presented. Call for the vote.
Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Swacker?
Yes.
Mr. Yoko?
Yes.
Mr. Pack?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbs?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hillgas?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
And Chairman Bryant?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passed. Bypass amendments, pass. Item number seven on our agenda tonight is public hearing. This is Smithfield zoning ordinance, Article 5I5 text amendment. Town of Smithfield is the applicant. Staff report, please.
Yes, thank you, sir. Town staff is suggesting a text amendment to Article 5I5 of the Smithfield zoning ordinance. Section I-5 currently reads, "No amendment shall be made to any accepted proffer except in the manner of a new rezoning application as set forth herein." This language is contradictory to the Virginia Code, Section 522302B, which allows amendments to proffered conditions where such amendment does not affect the conditions of use or density. A local governing body may waive the requirement for a public hearing. Town staff proposed the following addition to Section 5, including the language, "However, where amendment to such proffered conditions is requested, and where such amendment does not affect the condition of use or density, a local governing body may waive the requirement for a public hearing and a new rezoning application." Town staff recommend a robust discussion and a favorable recommendation to Town Council. A redlined version of the zoning ordinance follows this staff report. Thank you.
Thank you. This being public comments of public hearing, is there anyone in the public would like to comment? Do we have sign up? No sign up?
I would.
Yes, sir. State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Chris Torrey. I live at 32 Main Street here in Smithfield, across the street from Methodist Church. That's really a bad idea that you guys are considering. I don't know where that came from, but it's just terrible. What you're talking about is contravening everything that I've read in Virginia statute that has to do with proffers. When a guy comes before you for a rezoning application, he's supposed to pay his own way. He's supposed to pay for his impacts on public facilities, and he's supposed to pay for the utilities that he uses to develop his piece of property. That's what proffers are for. The town is supposed to assess the impact fees, and it's supposed to make an offer to the developer, and the developer is supposed to respond. And at the point that the developer responds, there's supposed to be a public hearing. And after the public hearing is held, the statute says that if the guy wants to change his mind and increase or decrease the sum of his proffers, that's acceptable insofar as there is another public hearing, and that's what you guys are considering elimination of, the second public hearing. The proffer could go down. It doesn't have to go up, and yet nobody would know it but you guys. And that's kind of the problem around here. There was a closed-door meeting in December of '21 between the County Board of Supervisors and the Town Council in '21, December 22, 2021. And Mr. Luter proposed three different things for preapproval. One of them was a $6 million contribution to a farmer's market building of 13,000 square feet that couldn't possibly cost $9 million, but he said it would. The second one was preapproval for what he was terming master infrastructure, but nobody has ever defined what master infrastructure is. What is that? Are we supposed to pay tax money to run utilities out there to his property? Are we supposed to use tax money to develop that whole piece of property for him? Are we supposed to put in all of the electrical utilities, and the fire main, and the water main, and the sewer main, and the sanitary sewer? What is that, master infrastructure? That's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else care to speak at this time? No? Seeing none? Public comments of this item is closed.
Mr. Chairman, that's not at all what this is about. The, this whole issue came up when the, it was discovered that the developer of Mallory Point, Mallory Farms, whatever you want to call it, if you may recall those who were involved in that, there was a proposal in their initial proffers that there would be a peer at the Planning Commission level. They put it in their proffers, and then they, the public spoke, and there was great opposition to that because they, it was determined that the creek is not navigable, and there should not be a peer. And so they agreed to remove that from their proffer. However, in the written submittal, it was not removed, and it went to the Town Council, and the Town Council approved the proffers that include a peer on the creek. And the developer came back, his engineer was apparently designing the layout for that phase of the project, and it was discovered that the proffers still included a requirement for the peer. So Ms. Clary rightly pointed out that our ordinance requires would require a public hearing. But I had a conversation with the county attorney who explained to me and reminded me that there is a new ordinance, there's been another new ordinance of statute approved by the General Assembly, which would allow a, the governing body to correct that mistake without having to have a new zoning application and new public hearings at the Planning Commission and Town Council level. That's what it was created for. Mr. Torrey rightly stated that there is a process by which a developer comes to you with initial zoning application, and he can make proffers, and we can, the town can accept proffers, and that's not what we're talking about. We're not talking about doing away with any of that. What we're talking about is a mechanism that would permit the town to deal with a scenario just as I described. It's in the state code, it's been approved. We're not suggesting that the Planning Commission nor the Town Council now has the authority to just wipe away things that have been aired. This was a mistake. It was, I'm sure most of you, if not all of you remember that, who were participating in that thing. It was a big controversy about the peer, and we need to fix it. And it doesn't seem to, doesn't seem to me, or to Ms. Clary, or to the town manager who we discussed this with, that it makes any sense to go through a process by which you go through the same scenario, the same process that we went through for the initial rezoning of the Mallory Farms project. And if you adopt this ordinance, you would not have to do that. The Town Council can, by their action, correct the problem.
Mr. Riddick?
Yes.
If the Town Council at the same time wished to make it, to change a proffer that would be more favorable to the developer, would that also be allowed under this ordinance?
Well, it depends on what kind of proffer it is.
It would, in general, a proffer that was more favorable to the developer.
Well, it can't have anything to do with density, or...
The condition of use.
The conditions of use. And conditions of use are the things that they propose with respect to how things appear, their site plan, that, all of those things that are integral in making that a, persuading a governing body to approve a zoning application have to do with conditions of use.
My thought process on this is that proffers are a very contentious subject, and when we talk about them, when we talk about rezonings, often it is contentious. And whatever decision we wind up with at the end, they're often based on these proffers. So to change these proffers or give a governing body the ability to change these proffers without a public hearing, to me, does not appear to be a very good idea. That being said, I don't think we need to go back through a rezoning application, but if the developers of Mallory Scott said, hey, we forgot to take this peer out, and that's the way it was approved, okay, I get that was a mistake, but to have a public hearing to say, hey, we're going to amend the proffers, I don't think hurts anything. It slows it down a little bit, but they know it's coming, it's not that big a deal. I don't know that it would need to go through a new rezoning. I don't think a new rezoning would be applicable, but they said, you know, we want to amend our proffers, and here's what we want to do. I think the public at least has the opportunity to weigh on it. I don't think that hurts anything. It keeps, it helps keep us more honest and upfront with what's going on and on a development that was already contentious, and as most are these days, especially larger ones. I mean, that's my two cents on it.
It's my understanding that you have either option. The Planning Commission or the council can request a public hearing if they deem necessary. It's not necessarily eliminated.
It says, it says may. It doesn't say it has to.
It's an option.
It's an option.
Yes.
It doesn't say shall, it says may. I mean, as the town code currently is, what you're suggesting, Mr. Pack, that's, that's not an option. You have to, there has to be a new zoning application. And obviously, the General Assembly, in response to, but our zoning ordinance mirrors the state code because we're required to do that. We are Dillon Rule State. We can only do what they say we can do. So that was not an option until the General Assembly changed the code that permits this
So with this particular problem with Mallory Scott, this is a good example, we could not have a public hearing, have them re-present the proffers and vote only on the proffers. Would have to go through a full rezoning?
It's the same process. It requires all the notice, which is, if you recall that, that requires all the notice, which is, not only includes publication, but individual letters to adjacent property owners. It requires, I'm trying to think what the process is. It would require the same fees. So unless you want to, I mean, it, I guess you can require them to do, you can decline to, the Town Council could decline to allow them to amend their proffers in this manner. But this gives the Town Council the option to do that.
I remember correctly, when we were talking about this during the time, they presented us a piece of paper with the proffers on them. It had approximately nine to 10 proffers on it. We had asked, or there was a comment made, that can they update that document to reflect removing that proffer? And there was a reason we couldn't allow them to do that because they would have to have started over. But during that process, if we amend proffers, can't they change their proffer statement? Or is that proffer statement written, set in stone from the time of their application through the approval process?
They can amend their proffers.
Because I thought we had talked about that, but we wouldn't, we didn't allow them to resubmit that document with the change of the peer coming out of that because we would have had to start over.
And I don't remember that, but they could have, after the action by the Planning Commission, they could have amended their proffers based on, they made a representation to you that they were going to do that. I mean, I think that's clearly within the record because there was a great, if you recall, there was a large number of speakers who, that was their primary concern, was that the, there would be tremendous impact on the creek. I think it's Moon Creek is...
It is.
It's Moon Creek. And they, this gentleman lives right across, I forgot what his name is, you know, he stated that the creek was too shallow, it was, you know, environmentally sensitive, this is not something that could support that kind of traffic, it should not be accessed by a peer. And as I recall, the consensus among the Planning Commission was, that's correct, it should not be that way, it needs to be removed. And they, and it was sent forward with the understanding that it would be removed, and apparently somewhere along the way, it was not. And so it was discovered at the, I mean, the proffers are recorded in the courthouse, they're there. They are, I mean, they are of record.
I just want to add to that. During the site plan review, it was identified that the proffered 200-foot taper and 200-foot stacking lane would not be feasible because there's a conflict point with the church entrance, and so those numbers do have to be adjusted, and that would be another amendment to the proffer because they did proffer the 200 and 200.
I can understand amending proffers. Things happen that we don't know may happen. But I don't think we should waive the right for a public hearing to amend proffers. I hate to see it go through a full new rezoning. I don't think that's also necessary. I'd like to see it be easier than that. I don't think that, you know, I think your adjacent landowners need to be notified, yes. Do you need to go for a full-blown new rehearing, new rezoning application? No. But I do believe we need a public hearing if any proffers are modified. That's just my two cents. It's just, it just makes, it's too ripe for abuse otherwise.
I think that what Mr. Riddick said, kind of says it all, it's may, not has to, plus it's in compliance with the state, which we really don't have a lot of flexibility there, you know? We have to, we have certain limitations as far as what we can do, and by right, the state tells us what we can do.
The state tells you what you have to do.
Right.
The, Ms. Clary and I had a discussion about this. We were, she rightly suggested that we should amend the zoning ordinance first. It's my opinion that the state law trumps the town code anyhow. It's appropriate to amend the zoning ordinance, but we're required to do so to conform our ordinances with state law.
Right.
You're exactly right, Mr. Davidson. Now, you can, you can have an opinion that you don't like it, and you don't think it was very wise on the part of the General Assembly, but that's above your pay grade. You have, you get an opinion, but, and you can complain about it, and you can write to your delegates and your senators, but they've, they've made the decision already.
So Attorney Riddick, to be clear, the state code says that proffers can be amended as long as it doesn't change use, use of property or density. Is that...
And yes, and use is broadly defined because, I mean, when you, when an applicant comes before you and says, this is my project, and this is, this is what it's going to, this is how I'm going to use this property, and I'm going to put this product, and it's going to look like this, and it's going to have these features, that's upon which you base your decision to say yes or no, then that's, that's a component of use. In the instant, in the case of, we've had something more recently, I mean, it's a technical thing, where there's, there are, engineers make mistakes, things like that, which need to be corrected, too. Fortunately, we didn't have to go through that process, but there are, humans are fallible, they make mistakes all the time, and unfortunately, we have to correct them, and when you discover them, you have an obligation to correct them.
So quite plainly, do we have a choice?
You can vote no, but it's going to go to the, you can vote, you can recommend not to, but when we get to the Town Council, I'm going to tell them that they really have an obligation to amend the town code to comport with state law.
Comply with the state law. Okay, understood.
So I guess our question or concern is, if a developer says, I'm going to increase the water main to 18 inches to allow for water pressure, but now they come back and say, I want to amend my proffer station, I don't want a proffer thing, they're going to say, I don't want to do that, that would fall under use because it substantially affects the use of the property. They would not be allowed to amend that proffer.
Well, that's not really a good one because, I mean, because those things are kind of dictated by our standards, but let's think of something that they'll...
Well, if they wanted to reduce green space and put in more lots.
Yes, that would absolutely be...
I mean, that's an easy one.
Yes, that's an easy one.
So in practicality, how would this work? If somebody wanted to amend their proffers, would council have to vote on whether or not they wish to have a public hearing on that?
It could be, it would have to be brought to their attention and say, look, the applicant is asked, this is the situation, you, you may... You, you may do this in this abbreviated process, or you can require the developer to go back to the drawing board, not to the drawing board, because that's, that's, that's the wrong term, but to go back through the full process.
But they would have to vote, so in some form, the public would be aware
Correct.
of the change of proffers. And so they could air their grievances or support at the time of that vote.
Correct, so, back to the, the case at hand, which we're, which really prompted all of this. At some point down the road, after this is ended, um, at this level and then at the town council, we're going, Ms. Clary is gonna go to the town council and say, we have a problem with the proffers that are of record with respect to Mallory Scott. If you recall, there wasn't supposed to be a peer, but it's in the writing that there is a peer that's to be required on Moon Creek. And the law permits you to accept an amendment to that proffer to remove that.
Okay, thank you.
I'm asking for some clarity. As Vice Chair Hilligas just suggested, to reduce green space and add additional units, wouldn't that be a change to the site plan?
Excuse me?
Would that be a change to the site plan? If an applicant come back to amend proffers and then ask to reduce green space and add additional units?
Yeah, that has to do with density, that's something, the law doesn't permit that.
Okay.
The law doesn't permit, if they want to come back and if they want more units or they want to, uh, increase the density or they want to change their overall use of the project or components that they proffered with respect to the use of the property, they can't do that through this abbreviated process.
Okay, thank you.
That has to go back through a full, an amendment, which would, it's an amendment process, which is a new application for a change. We call it rezoning, it's technically, it's a change in zoning classification, it's an amendment to the zoning ordinance. Every, and this is, and, and we kind of talked about this during the, um, the comprehensive plan thing, but the zoning map is, is part of the zoning ordinance. And when somebody comes in, they make an application to change the zoning ordinance or a portion thereof to permit a certain property to be used in a certain way. And that's what you're doing, we call it rezoning, it's because it changes it from one classification to the other. But what you're really doing is adopting an amendment to your zoning ordinance to permit a piece of property to be used in a certain way. And the law requ, the law permits you to accept proffer conditions. Now, people talk about proffers all the time and most often they talk about money, um, because it's cash proffers. That's a big, that's a big football and it's very, the general assembly's made it very difficult to deal with that because they restricted what localities can do. Mr. Torrey was right about it, it's sort of a back and forth thing. You can't say, you've got to give me 15,000 a lot, but he can, the developer can come in and say, we want you to rezone this and in exchange for your favorable consideration, we would offer you, you know, X dollars per lot. And we offer these financial incentives to get you to do something. And if you do it the right way, it's permitted, if you do it, if the, if the town council or the planning commission asks for it as a condition of rezoning, it's illegal. It used to be.
Understood.
Years ago, it was kind of, you either pay the price or you don't get your zoning. And that's, that doesn't happen anymore, the law has changed very dramatically in that regard.
Any further comments from the commission? Mr. Torrey, I'm not ignoring you, it, just a matter of rule of order. The public comments section has been closed, but to give you an opportunity, we have two more public comments, uh, public hearings coming up after this one. Okay, but not at this time. No further planning commission comments? Seeing none, the chair, entertain a motion. Does this require further discussion?
Well, I'll give you a motion. I don't know if I was gonna get a second. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we do not send this as a favorable recommendation to town council.
Do we have a motion? Do we have, do we have a second?
I didn't think I'd get a second.
Then we have a motion?
Nobody second, so it dies on the floor. So I, the, the, it, this is gonna require further discussion. You know, I'm having problems with when you take the public out of the picture. That's, that's, that is, that's what, you know, it takes away transparency. And, and that's just the way I'm feeling.
Is it not allowed that if this has to come back up, like if this has to go back through the whole process from the beginning, is it possible to waive the developer's fee if nothing has really substantially changed? Is that allowed?
I don't think so. Because you're treating people differently. I mean, it's just a new application.
So even with the error was not with the developer, but with the town, because we missed it, right?
Well, we missed it, but they missed it too, they were supposed to admit, have amended the written condition. And they signed them and delivered them to us in that current form. So I don't, I don't think you can, you know, in this instance, I don't think you, I mean, certainly, there was fault all around.
But as I recall, the planning commission never approved that peer, I thought that was one of the things that we denied.
That's the whole point.
Okay.
Although you, you, you did not, you, you, they made the representation that there would be no peer and told you that, and yet it was not amended in the written document, which they signed and has been recorded. So in order to undo that, because they, they don't want to build a peer either. The public doesn't want the peer built and they don't want to build the peer, but the written document requires that it be built.
Understood.
Hi, hypothetically, if we, uh, if, if, if we and town council did not adopt this new condition and the, the applicant chose to push Virginia law, I assume we would wind up in court. Yes, I mean, is that, would that be an option for them?
Potentially, I don't think that's what they're looking.
I understand that's not what they're looking to do, I understand, that's one being hypothetical.
If not this developer or another.
Right.
Because it's, and we lose that case.
And that, that's where I was headed with this, we would lose that case.
The, the question, when you stand before the court and the court, the judge says, what does the statute say? What does the Virginia code say? And the code says, and it's section 15.2 dash 2302 subsection B. It specifically says exactly what we're recommending shall be included in the town zoning ordinance. And the judge is gonna say, well, why is it not, do you know that, are you aware that it should be in your zoning ordinance? And we would have to say, yes, in fact, we've had public hearings on that matter and you chose not to adopt it. That's correct, why did you not adopt it? Because we didn't want to. Well, that's not a good answer.
Well, then it comes back to us and then, then we have the option of waiving it and we choose not to.
Well, that, you have that option now.
Right, right.
If you adopt, if you adopt this ordinance, you still have that option. If, if Ms. Clary comes to you and says, we need to fix the peer problem and you say, well, I don't care, we're still gonna send it back through the, the regular process, then that's the way it has to go because the code says may, it doesn't say shall.
And that, that one gets, gets a different can of worms for me too, because like, if I like developer A and I want to be kind to him and I say, okay, but I don't like developer B and I don't, I want to be a jerk to developer B, I then have the choice to pick and choose if that's, and, and that, and that part becomes goofy because not everybody's on the up and up.
But that happens, that, that's, that you elect people to make decisions and they bring their biases to the table in every instance. They, they, people are human beings and they have, they have opinions about whatever comes before them, whether they be in favor or against, and that's never gonna change. And you may think that developer A is great and you literally like his project and you may think that developer B is terrible and you don't like his project, and you're entitled to think that way.
What, what if we, um, added a section to, um, section W and article two, which addresses our public hearings? Where we addressed administrative issues dealing with rezonings that would require a public hearing, but not necessarily a full rezoning application?
I'm okay with that because I think that this clearly was an administrative issue. And, and that I'm okay fixing, but we're looking at more, and, and when I, when I try and look at changing any zoning ordinance, I don't look at just the easy case, because this is an easy case. You know, Mallory Scott, they, there was lots of talk about the peer, nobody wanted to have the peer. Everybody agreed not to have the peer, but somehow or another, we made a mistake and there's a peer in the proffers, okay? That's a very clear one, but they're not always clear. And so when you change a zoning ordinance, you don't look at just the easy ones like we have in front of us, but we look at the difficult ones too, uh, where, you know, perhaps the developer was being really sneaky and he wanted the peer there, he wanted his amenity to sell his community and he purposely snuck it through and we didn't catch it. Now it's a different ballgame and that's where we need to have the public involved in it and let them know where, where, where we're going. And you can't have one with the, the, you can't just choose the easy ones and, and the, and the hard ones. And, and we put the option in there for may, you know? What if Ms. Clary's not here one day and we get a really corrupt planning director, you know?
That's all well and good.
I, I mean, that, that's what we have to protect ourselves from.
That's all well and good, but that's not, the, the general assembly's made that decision, not you.
Is it possible to have any changes be a, a line item agenda for this? That it gets reviewed to discuss whether we're going to pursue this from the beginning or is this an admin, will allow for administrative approval for, for that item? Would that make it an item to discuss like we're doing tonight to look at this item? Or is that taking it from ma, may to shall?
You can talk about it all you want to, but it still doesn't change, it doesn't allow you to amend the proffers.
But that's kind of what I was getting at, Tom, if, if town council has to vote on whether or not there is a public hearing, that should be an agenda item, if I'm hearing you correctly, which the public could comment on at that time or during that meeting.
So the public could bring up at that point their desire
To have a public hearing.
To have a public hearing on it and not waiving the requirement.
So that means the public still has a voice?
They would. Because in this, and, and, you know, the reason we, we, the reason we have this issue is because we have an immediate concern that we have to deal with. And so that prompted all of us. And so we were, we thought we had to go back through the process and we don't because the general assembly has prescribed that there is a process which we, which is the law of the state of Virginia. And so, but the town council still has the option, option to go. You know, we don't care that, um, this is just a fishing pier. We want it to go through a full rezoning application and they can do that. That's, they, it's, because it says may, it does not say shall. And that's entirely legal, they would be, they would be empowered to do that. Now, from a practical matter, you know, there's, you know, you hope that people sitting in, in those seats have common sense and act in that, in that way. And I think we have a history of that, people do have common sense.
My understanding is we, we can argue this all night, whether we like it, we don't like it, whether we agree with Randy or we don't, uh, but it's still the law. The, the, the general assembly has said, this is the way it is. Now, we, we, we can decide to take on the general assembly, but as Mr. Riddick says, we can lose and we would because it's, it's there. If we don't like it, then I suppose we can talk to our representatives and get the general assembly to change it. But we don't have that ability here.
We don't have the ability to change it, but we have the ability to review it at additional step.
You did.
Yes.
And I would like the additional step in place, whether it's at the planning commission level, then town council, or just town council to review that formally without it being done administratively, without anybody understanding the process.
And, you know, it's, she, we're not making any secret about what, what, I mean, she hasn't just run off to the, the town council and said, look, we've got to fix this problem, I'm not going to tell the planning commission. We've put all the cards on the table, there was a mistake that's been made, it needs to be corrected. It's not like there was any effort to be, um, less than transparent at this level about the problem.
Well, I get it, I'm not saying that, I just think.
Just to address your concern.
I just think the, I think it should be an agenda item on somebody's agenda, either our level or town council level, in addition to what's gonna have to happen because of state law.
Are you saying you'd like to change the words local governing body to specifically call out what the process would be? And change it specifically to a planning commission action item to recommend to council?
Yeah, I mean, I think it, yeah, if we need to do it that way, yes, I think it would make more sense to define where, who's gonna be looking at it formally.
Well, I don't think it would be, how about this? I don't think it would be improper or deviating so greatly from state law that says that after notice to the planning commission, you don't get to vote on it, but you get to have, after notice to the planning commission, the gov, the, then this procedure would be, in other words, it, there's, before it would go to the town council for this action, you would, you would at least give notice about it. It's not within your purview to act on it though, because it's up to the town council as to whether they're gonna say, okay, we'll fix it through this amended, this abbreviated process, or we're gonna require a full application. That's their decision, not yours.
So would you envision the notice being, excuse me, um, in the director's report? Would it be an agenda item for us? How would you envision that playing out?
You could even say a comment.
Well.
With planning commission comments on.
Well, I think it's, I don't think buried in a report somewhere is notice, I think notices, they have to bring it to your attention, that, that's what notice is.
Also, my concern here is, if an applicant comes back, if an applicant comes back to ask for an amendment to the proffers and such, is there a benchmark? I think where the director of planning would come back to town council and planning commission before making such an amendment, an administrative amendment?
They have to, that's what, that's what we're talking about.
The only thing we're eliminating is a need for a public hearing.
For, for, for amendments to proffers that do not have anything to do with use or density. So back to Ms. Hilligas's example, if they wanted more units and less green space, it doesn't work that way. They have to go back through the process.
If you reverse that, Mr. Riddick, and they wanted less units and more green space.
They can, they can.
Well, they can do that without, without building out anyhow, never mind, never mind, okay.
Where can we find such a developer?
Yeah.
Let's get him on speed dial.
I'm just looking at both sides of it, but they wouldn't have to build out the entire community if they chose not to anyhow.
But their proffers are based on limits, not.
Yes, right, understood. They're not profiting that they will build 100 units or, or whatever, right.
Not more than. And in most instances, they build everything they can build.
Understood, yes, sir.
I just want to clarify Chairman Brian's question, that we don't administratively approve any change to proffers. The applicant came to us with this identified administrative error and we're trying to figure out how, best way to go about bringing it to everyone's attention, that it was an administrative error, but town staff do not approve it without. that it was an administrative error, but town staff do not approve it without, as the zoning ordinance stands, without a full rezoning.
She doesn't have that authority.
Okay.
She can't waive a proffer.
So I, I guess I'm trying to understand, what is an administrative change now? What does that encompass? What does that encompass?
Maybe that's, it's not administrative. This is a, a proffer that does not affect use or density. So in this instance, it is a, a feature, an amenity. I guess it was an amenity and some, and most of the people who spoke thought it was not an amenity. It was something detrimental to the project. And so the public was very vocal in their opposition to a fishing pier or a kayak pier, or whatever kind of pier it was. And everybody, the consensus in this room was unanimous that there should not be a pier. And yet the pier, the requirement is in the proffers that there shall be a pier. This is, we're not the only locality that's ever done this. I, I mean, I had a long conversation with the county attorney and from time to time, this, they've had to use this for the same type of instance. You know, it, it, it just happens. It's, it's part of, um, people are humans.
Who is the local governing body by definition?
Town Council.
Town Council.
Okay.
You're appointed, you're not elected.
Correct.
So it's the, 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 the Town Council elected by the citizens of Town Smithfield.
All I wanna make sure of is that the Town Council is gonna review any changes before any action is made.
Oh, they, they have to. They, it has to be, it is an ordinance. Once again, they can adopt an ordinance to change, to adopt a set of new proffers that excludes only that one that amends the fishing pier.
And the public always has the opportunity in the Town Council meeting to speak under public comments on any section of that meeting, if it's not expressly solicited otherwise.
Correct.
So they have the option to speak on that option at a meeting.
But it's like, I forgot what someone said. The first course of action will be Ms. Clary will bring the matter to the attention of the Town Council and say, look, we have a problem. You have two ways to fix it. You can either do it through this abbreviated process without a public hearing, or you can require the applicant to file a new zoning application.
All right. My point probably is, is, my point isn't going to go across and that's okay. So what I wanna do is try and work on this so that if we're gonna send this forward, it works to the most transparent way possible. So can we add a section that says, the Town Council must first have a vote uh, about whether or not to waive the public hearing?
You can't tell them. You can't tell them they must do anything.
No, you can't do that.
We can't tell them that.
Why not?
We don't dictate what they do.
Okay, but they can dictate. If we're making a recommendation to Town Council, they can dictate what they do and they can dictate that Town Council must have a vote on this.
Then you need to rally them to do that.
Well, it's, they
Well, we can, but I'm saying if, i- i- if I'm gonna vote in favor of this, we can get this across. I want it to be, i- is, as good a bill as it can, okay? So my suggestion would be, you know, all right, maybe said, okay, if we're gonna have a choice, that it, that it, that if it's gonna be a proffer, it has, there has to be an action, a way to get this to it. And it starts with Ms. Clary, or the, the Director of Planning saying, here's what's up and you guys may waive this or you may force to go back. And I would like at that decision there to be Town Council say, okay, well, we're gonna take this to a vote and every, all seven members will vote yea or nay on whether to, to move forward with that.
She doesn't have the right to put anything on your agenda without, I mean, this is, if she put it on the agenda for action, that would be the, the
We required it to be an action item.
If it was an action item, the, the Town Council can go, no, we choose not to do this because we believe it requires a public hearing. We're not comfortable with taking
Right. All I'm asking is that it becomes an action item on whether to make it a public hearing or not.
Okay, well, that's, that's
It's adding a step. And I realize we cannot as Planning Commission do that. But Town Council could say, okay, we're comfortable with that because we're not talking about just our Town Council. We're talking about future Town Councils. So you're setting a, a precedent of saying, the first thing to do before this is that this Town Council will vote whether to make this a public hearing or not. And they say, no, we don't need, we don't feel it needs to be a public hearing. At least there's been a vote and everybody knows there's been a vote that we'd said, no, you don't need a public hearing on this one. It was just a mistake and we're okay with that. Or they can say, no, we're crooked and we don't want it to be a public hearing. You got a stake for that too. And all we can do is recommend that. We could make that recommendation to Town Council and Town Council, when they see this, will look at it and say, well, why, why Randy, did, did, did Planning Commission recommend this? And I'll explain tonight my reasoning for, for at least recommending that. It just adds a step to it so that we, we have a vote on whether to make a Town Council, make a public hearing or not. I'm trying to put some additional safeguards in here to at least make sure that the proffers are, you know? Truthfully, we have to change this. I mean, we don't have to, but we're gonna get caught one day and we're gonna wind up in court. So we really should change it, right? I mean, that's, that's the bottom line. That's what Bill's been saying all along, right? And whether I like it or I don't like it, doesn't matter a hill of beans because I can't change it. I can say, no, we're not gonna do it and, and we can go down that stubborn route. But that's not the correct way to do this. The correct way to do this is make it as transparent as we possibly can. So one avenue I think that would make this more transparent is that the Town Council, you know, may waive the requirement for a public hearing and new rezoning application and that the Town Council shall vote on whether or not to require a public hearing.
Vote in a public meeting?
In a public meeting.
Versus a committee meeting or something like that.
Yeah, at, at a Town Council meeting, where they say, yeah, we, 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 we think that this was a mistake. We think that this community pier should, was there by accident. We are not going to require a public hearing, okay? And then it's out in the open, it's public and the council voted whether or not. So that way there's no question or not. I'm just trying to add an additional layer in there and I don't know exactly how to word that.
Are you suggesting possibly a local governing body may waive the requirement for a public hearing and new rezoning application by majority vote at its regularly scheduled Town Council meeting?
And that's why you're so good at what you do.
But I thought that was already in it. That's not already in the
It doesn't require an official vote.
Yeah, okay.
So maybe you just put that motion.
My first motion, Mr. Gibbs, did not go so well.
Glad you learned something.
Well, well, you know, we, we, Mr. Davison's right. We really need to stick to the Virginia code, whether or not we like it. But if we can add the language, Ms. Clary, if you would read that one more time, please?
Yes, sir. A local governing body may waive the requirement for a public hearing and new rezoning application by majority vote at its regularly scheduled Town Council meeting.
I would make the motion.
Is that, that's only, that's after, are you suggesting that be inserted after this provision, right? Because we're only dealing with, we, we don't wanna, we don't wanna, we can't waive the requirement of a new public hearing with respect to a, a new zoning application.
No, the, the entire red line in here, the entire red line here and adding the, the language at the end of it. So no, it was still how, however, when amendment
Yes, sir.
To, yes, correct.
That's, I mean, that's fine because they have to make that, if you want, you're basically stating what they have to do anyhow, but that's okay.
Well, I would, I would make the motion that we send this to Town Council with a favorable recommendation with the language as presented and the additional language that Mrs. Clary read.
Could we have that repeated again?
Can we repeat the entire thing in red line, please?
Just what she said.
Uh, I'm gonna just read the entire Section Five for clarity. No amendment shall be made to any accepted proffer except in the manner of a new rezoning application as set forth herein. However, where an amendment to such proffered conditions is requested and where such amendment does not affect the condition of use or density, a local governing body may waive the requirement for a public hearing and new rezoning application by majority vote at its regularly scheduled Town Council meeting.
That, that was the motion that, that I put forward.
Then I would second Randy's, as presented. That we, we forward that Town Council with our recommendation.
So we have a motion and a second to recommend this ordinance change to Town Council as amended with the additional statement as provided by Commissioner Pack. Is there any further discussion? Hearing on. Call for the vote.
Mr. Swecker?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Yoko?
Yes.
Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hilligas?
Yes.
Mr. Pack?
Yes.
Mr. Davison?
Yes.
And Chairman Bryan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion approved. Item number seven. Next on our agenda is item number eight. This is also a public hearing. Smithfield zoning ordinance, Article Two, P-15 text amendment. Town of Smithfield applicant. Report, please, Director Clary.
Yes, thank you, sir. At the Tuesday, January tenth, twenty twenty-three Planning Commission, town staff were tasked with updating this Section fifteen of Article Two of the Smithfield zoning ordinance. Uh, the Planning Commission agreed they'd like it to read twenty-one days of automatic approval for a portable moving container and then the applicant would need to get a zoning permit waiver for the additional forty-five day approval. This, uh, amends, uh, item fifteen from a maximum of sixty days with that zoning waiver. A redlined version follows the original draft indicating that they are permissible for twenty-one days. After the twenty-one days, portable storage units are permissible for use for a maximum of forty-five days with a zoning waiver. And after that time, uh, it continues on that a zoning permit must be obtained for an additional ninety days of use. Um, again, if additional time is needed, the applicant would have to come before Planning Commission uh, to seek that additional time. Uh, town staff do recommend a robust discussion and a favorable recommendation to Town Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Being a public hearing, do we have anyone signed up?
No, sir.
No one signed up for the public hearing. However, if anyone would like to speak in regards to this amendment, this application, you may do so now. Anyone in front of the public would like to speak? Seeing none, public comments portion of this hearing is closed. Planning Commission comments.
Uh, just, just a question for Ms. Clary. Um, at our last meeting, we were discussing this. Uh, Mr. Brooks had mentioned a couple opportunities of, of how to enforce this as far as stickers or, or whatever the case might be. Uh, have you had any discussions with Mr. Brooks yet?
Uh, no, sir, I have not. I thought his ideas were, were very enlightening and we look forward to implementing them with some sort of identification, marking that date that they were placed there and reaching out to the portable storage container companies as well.
But that would be operational and doesn't need to be in our zoning
Correct, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Director Clary, any idea how many these, uh, companies would provide these, uh, storage units?
Uh, the company that comes to mind is the Pods, portable moving storage that we see a lot of. Uh, we do identify them on our code sweeps, um, throughout town and we do, uh, date them that way, uh, currently.
You've found no others?
I, I apologize, but I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure on, on the various companies. Uh, we will be reaching out to local, to local companies, um, and then providing them with their, their, our updated ordinance, uh, explaining the dates and the process for obtaining waivers and permits.
And would it behoove you at all if we did codify that any company providing portable storage units shall get one of these stickers from the town? Would that help you?
So we do come across the issue of residents that live in Smithfield but don't live within town limits. And so a lot of times we have to try to distinguish with these companies whether or not they are placing a portable storage unit actually inside town or actually within the county.
I'm just trying to make your job easier, not, not more difficult. I appreciate the work you've done on this.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, this, this is what we discussed, uh, I believe it was last month and asked Ms. Clary to bring back to us. Uh, I have no problems with what was presented and happy to see. I think it's a, it's a nice recommendation policy. And I move that we, uh, accept these amendment as presented.
Second.
We have a motion to accept the amendment to the zone, zoning ordinance and a second. I still, I'm still concerned about, uh, I'm familiar with Pods. Just additional discussion. I'm familiar with Pods, but with any other company coming in doing, providing these storage units, how would we know? How would the town address that?
That would be an operational
I'm sorry?
That, that would be an operational task for the, for town staff to figure out. I mean, there, there's many of them. I mean, Home Depot's all from, you can buy bags now that somebody comes and picks up. You know, Mr. Brooks used to deal with that in his business. There, there's very many of them. So we, we, you know, they, they would have to do this operationally through whatever mechanism that staff feels best. And Ms. Clary indicated that, you know, uh, their, their normal sweeps are, are one of those areas.
And often their best enforcers are neighbors.
Guaranteed.
Rat, Rat Pack, Orange Box, um, there's one. If you go out Nike Park Road right now, there's a pair of them sitting in a house on Nike Park Road right now.
But what this ordinance does for us is it allows folks to have those first twenty-one days to get their stuff in or out as needed without the hassle of going to town for a permit as many would not be aware of. And it also keeps staff from having to sweat it but so much.
And it's definitely beneficial to military personnel that are moving into the area.
Absolutely.
Yes, I agree. But as I recall, during Mr. Brooks' discussion, there was some mechanism or something whereas the town, the city, the city itself sent these applications to these companies so that they could attach them to these units. I believe that's our, I understood it. How would the Town of Smithfield do that?
Correct. So, so we're reaching out, uh, to local companies that we know that deliver, uh, these portable storage devices and informing them of our new ordinance, um, if adopted. Um, again, we do pick them up from neighbors that do report and then we're able to document that date. This would allow us to automatically issue the zoning permit waiver for that additional forty-five days after we've already identified it as being present on the property for twenty-one days. Uh, the idea here is that hopefully the portable storage unit will be delivered and removed within that twenty-one day period and town staff won't have to go through that additional, uh, zoning waiver and permit process. Thank you.
Okay. No further discussion? We have a motion to present the, uh, amendment as presented and a second. Call for the vote.
Mr. Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Pack?
Yes.
Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Davison?
Yes.
Mr. Swecker?
Yes.
Mr. Yoko?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hilligas?
Yes.
And Chairman Bryan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passed. Care, motion passed. The next item on our agenda, I thought it was three public hearings, there's only two. This is a discussion item. This discussion item is a zoning ordinance, Article Two, P-17 text amendment, Town of Smithfield is the applicant. Can we have the staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, sir. Uh, Section fifteen addresses the portable storage unit, uh, devices and construction debris containers are on, uh, Section sixteen. What town staff is proposing is Item seventeen. This is for the shipping containers. Uh, Sec, Section seventeen states that shipping containers are considered accessory structures for setback placement purposes and shall not be utilized as primary buildings or dwellings. They shall be permitted by right in the heavy industrial zoning district. This is the I-two. At no time shall shipping containers be stacked or used for habit At no time shall shipping containers be stacked or used for habitation without the successful acquisition of a special use permit. Shipping containers are permissible in the L, light industrial, L-one zoning district, community conservation, CC zoning district, and highway retail commercial, HRC zoning district, only after the successful acquisition of a special use permit. Uh, they are not permissible in any other zoning districts. It continues to go, uh, discussing the appeals process. Uh, this draft is the draft that appeared during the public hearing last month at the Tuesday, January tenth, twenty twenty-three Planning Commission meeting. Uh, we do recommend a robust discussion and a favorable recommendation to town council. Uh, for clarity, we would be adding shipping containers as a by right use in the I-two. It would be a special use permit in I-one, CC, HRC. And then we're also including the definition in Article thirteen of shipping containers and portable storage containers. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Director. Planning commission comments? We have been through this. And it is what we asked for.
It's above and beyond what we asked for, it's fantastic.
Yes. But are there any questions, comments from new members? None? Dr. Pope? Ms. Swecker?
Yes.
Wait a minute. Not any questions?
I'm reading this.
Okay. Vice Chair Hilligas?
I'm fully versed in storage containers.
Okay.
I do have one question. Uh, there was, there was one section in here about stacking these, so with a special use permit, a, a, in, in, in any of these areas, they could be stacked, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's a very important point, because our fire department uses these for training. And if you're sitting at McDonald's and you're looking out of the checkout line, they're stacked over there now, and they're, they're there illegally, and, and we know that, and they know that we know that. So they, you know, but they could come back and do this, 'cause the training of the fire department does is so important for, for them in our area, so we do have a mechanism to allow for that.
Yes, sir.
I like when we have mechanisms to allow for things we hadn't thought of.
Well, I'm glad I'm fired for the fire department to stack them, but I don't know if I want Smithfield Foods to stack them six high out of convenience for.
And that's what, that's what a special use permit allows.
By law, you can only stack them five high anyway. That's industry standard.
Okay, but they can go higher than one. And so, if they have it by right, is that still a special use permit?
There, there's no stacking by right. There's a stacking only by special use permit. Yeah, that, 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 she, she said that in there.
All right, I missed it, sorry. I was reading it.
Yeah. At no time shall shipping, shipping containers be stacked or used for habitation without the successful acquisition of a special use permit. Which also would potentially, well, I don't know where you can use it for habitation, because you're not allowed in a residential area. That's, that's, but, yeah, good. Mr. Chairman, I make the recommendation that we send this to town council as presented with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
We have a mo, motion to forward this recommendation to town council as presented, and a second. Any further discussion? And I want to be clear myself, with Commissioner Pack, stacking is not allowed.
Without a special use permit.
Without special use permit. And it's my understanding, the fire department has to come back before this commission? Because they have stacked?
They had come back last month seeking an extension on their approval for their shipping containers until, um, this ordinance was finalized, so we would know how best to proceed with their application.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Call, well, call for the vote, recommendation.
Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Pack?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Davison?
Yes.
Mr. Swecker?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hilligas?
Yes.
Mr. Yoko?
Yes.
And Chairman Bryan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Recommendation passed. And, item number ten on our agenda tonight, approval of the Tuesday, January tenth, twenty twenty-three, meeting minutes. Attorney Rick?
Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission, I recommend the minutes be approved as presented.
So moved.
So moved.
Second. Second.
We have a motion to approve the minutes and a second. All in favor? That'll be known by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing no opposed? Approval of the minutes carries. Is there any further discussion? That is the last thing on our agenda tonight. Anything else? Anyone wanna discuss? No? All right, hearing none. This meeting is adjourned.